So 5:30, we'll call to order the December 6th meeting of the Cresco City Council. Vol. 1. Brenna?
President.
McConnell?
President.
Portman?
Yes.
And we'll act on the consent agenda, which is, one, approval of the agenda, two, approval of the claims, three, approval of minutes from November 15th, 2021, four, approval of Class C liquor license with Sunday service to Big Daddy Hideaway Court, DBA Sweeney's Lounge, five, approval of application for tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan for Kip and Amanda Powers, six, approval of designated snowmobile trail in city limits for December 20th, 2021, through April 1st, 2022, seven, approval of tree surgeon licenses for Tarzan Tree Service LLC, Total Tree Care LLC, Wilson Custom Tree Trimmers LLC, and Tim Watton, DBA Tim Watton Tree Service, and eight, approval of an excavator license for Maymore Tiling Inc., Skyline Construction Inc., Mud Slingers Inc., and MB Inc. Summ.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Stack reports? Report?
We had a water main break under Highway 9 at the intersection of Third Street Southwest. They were able to isolate the break without interrupting service to anybody, so it took Scott and a couple of weeks to be able to get here and get fixed. It was a four-inch main, they replaced it with a six-inch main, and we bored that to save time and money. The projects are now complete, but they won't back up today. Then there was another one on Thursday down at West End Clippers, that was a valve, more of a valve replacement than water main, and we have the valve on hand currently. The one has been replaced as well. Then, Northway well was here last week to finish installing the new 10-inch pipe. It was supposed to be 12-inch, I believe, but they couldn't make that work, so we downsized to 10-inch. That went well, and they routed and let it sit over the weekend, and will be here hopefully sometime this week to get the well back up and running. The street department was able to get the big rush pile burned out at Yard Waste, they all went pretty well, didn't take long for it to disappear. And then, T&amp;W Grindin' was here last week to grind at the Leaf Den as well, so, and it took them about six hours to do it.
Please?
The only thing I have to add to the report is, we're getting closer for our conditional laundry, because just paper cutting here with the academy and stuff, and getting the reports back, we are getting closer. I'm hoping by the end of the month, we'll at least have one of them in uniform. And then, we're also working with the two reserve officers, getting those guys started, so it's just more paperwork coming back from the academy.
Super, thanks. Administration?
The police department received a $5,000 grant from the Busca Trust. It's for energy efficiency upgrades, and so it is to be used for the difference in the price from a regular police car to a hybrid police car, and if there's any increase in the installation of the equipment, so, if we find when it gets right down to the end, if it is higher than the $5,000 projected difference, then we'll get that difference. And then, we're going to track it, compare the mileage between a regular vehicle and this one, and try to determine what our savings are in gas every year, so. And then, the theater received a $1,700 energy grant from the Busca Trust for installing spray foam insulation for $1,700, where they removed the seam shop. It's basically free air moving back and forth, so this insulation would really help our energy costs there, so we appreciate that, and thank you. I got a notice from MediaCom that rates are going to increase again. Local TV, 34% rate increase.
Local TV?
Yeah. There's a few fees that are lower, a lot of them are higher, looks like most of their packages are going up at $10 a month, so.
Any idea under our bill of terms for that?
I don't know. I'll look, every quarter we get a franchise statement, it's all secret, does say anything there. Been busy working on budgets, and then Wendy and Dean are working on investigating new microphones for the council, so when we're playing these, the meetings over YouTube is hard to understand and to hear it, so we're pricing that out. She thinks that we'll probably be able to get them for probably under $100 apiece, but she thinks there's probably going to have to be one at each of our spots, and there is probably an option where we can mute it, which would be nice, so we don't have a lot of over talk, and then we'll get one for the pedestal, or podium, and then we'll probably have to make, I'll come up to the podium and actually talk, so.
That's a good one.
But we'll keep it posted once I get the final price on it, but.
Maybe others?
I think they're all coming up.
Okay. Comments from the audience? Okay, that's good business. And the whole next page. We'll open the public hearing on the matter of the adoption of a proposed amendment number one to be amended and restated 2016 Cresco Urban Revitalization Plan for the Cresco Urban Revitalization Area. Are there any comments? And we'll close the public hearing. Item two, resolution adopting amendment one to the amended and restated 2016 Cresco Urban Revitalization Plan for the Cresco Urban Revitalization Area. Oh. Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Item three, public hearing to amend chapters 105.10, 105.14, 106.02, and 106.08, subparagraph one, in the City of Cresco Code of Ordinances pertaining to fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. Are there any comments?
I did receive a phone call this afternoon. She's unable to make the meeting, apologize for that. Her big concern was there's no room in her garage, court told us, so she said, Lily, the only place is going to be right on her sidewalk between her house and the garage, and everybody's going to have to walk right by, it's going to look terrible. I said, yeah, we kind of asked about that, not sure. Her other problem is she has no driveway to the street, so she doesn't know how she can wheel it down to the street, because her driveway's to the alley, and they pick up the garbage in the street, and then very concerned about her mother, who is slightly disabled, and is not going to be able to pull a tote down, and she said, myself and everybody on my block, all we do is put one little bag out every week, and she's very concerned about it. So I said, we had mentioned all of these concerns, so I suggested that she call Hawkeye Sanitation Expressive Concerns. The big option is, is there an option of not having a tote and just purchasing just the bags? I don't know.
That's what I was saying, Hawkeye Bag.
Right, and then they purchased the bags and not gave them monthly garbage, but I don't know.
So Hawkeye did say in regard to her mother, that they would pick up that they know about.
And that's what I said, calling, seeing if they can make special arrangements, but I said, these are all concerns, the concerns that the council's had, if they kind of brought it up, or that, so it's just, yeah.
Yeah, but she put no driveway to the street, I hope, and said they don't.
I said, well, maybe they, I said, well, maybe they pick up in the alley, and she said, well, half the people have the driveway to the street, and half the people have it to the alley, and I said, well, maybe, and I don't know about driving the garbage trucks down the alleys, if that's heavy weight, then, and then our alleys.
Winter time, they could see an issue. They won't, I know that they do now.
In the winter time, with the snow.
That would be really concerning.
And I think that's what she's concerned about, trying to get it down to the street, going through all the snow.
She would have.
I mean, it is an issue, it's.
I did have somebody contact me to ask him who would be liable for the damage of the bins, you know, they're paying the amortized price throughout the five-year period here. If it were to be damaged because this person had, actually had their current garbage container broken by the staff at Hawkeye, is Hawkeye liable for the damage, and do they cover replacement based off of that extra increased amount for the bins?
So we're not paying for the bins, and it's not amortized anymore?
Okay.
It's just built into the fees. So the way I understand it, if Hawkeye Sanitation were to damage the bins, that they would replace it.
Okay.
If it's due to negligence, say they drove over it, they started it on fire, something like that, then the homeowner would have to pay a replacement cost.
Okay, yeah, because the other concern they had was somebody driving by and hitting it with their vehicle or whatever, you know, on a garbage pickup day, is that on, is that on the homeowner, is that on Hawkeye? That was one thing, and I couldn't remember, I tried to look back through my notes, and I didn't see anything talking about that, other than the, like you said.
This kind of came up during our discussion when we went there in person, if it's negligence on the homeowner, then they would have to pay for the replacement cost, otherwise, so I don't know.
Okay.
A neighbor drives over it, I don't know what happens.
This is kind of new ground for us at Cresco, but I mean, there's police management, a lot of places do just what they're doing now, you know, and I would assume if your garbage can's out in the street and somebody runs it over and you don't know who it is, you probably have to go through the garbage can.
Kind of what I would guess, that you're not going to prove it wasn't you that did it, so.
And I think Theater is going with this new system with Hawkeye.
Are they?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's tough, because the city wasn't set up to sort of accommodate it.
You want me to figure your own garbage can out there, someone ran over it, you'd have to replace it.
Your own cost.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And item four is the second reading of the summary of proposed ordinance 492, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to fees recyclable and non-recyclable waste.
You're supposed to read this, right?
Uh huh. Okay. Below is a summary of ordinance 492. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapters 105.10, 105.14, 106.02, and 106.08, subparagraph one, pertaining to waste storage containers and recycling program for solid waste control and vehicles and fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. Be enacted by the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section one, sections modified. Chapter 105.10 describes the container specifications. Chapter 105.14 states that all recycling shall be commingled and shall not be separated by the use of paper sacks or plastic bags or other means. All food containers must be clean. Chapter 106.02 states that each household will be furnished one cart for commingled recycling and one cart for non-recyclable waste. Light commercial accounts that do not require a dumpster will be furnished one cart for non-recyclable waste. Chapter 106.08, subsection one, lists the fees that will be charged. These are effective January 1, 2022. Solid waste residential, $18.56 per month, and effective when carts are furnished, $21.35 per month, and for old, 65 and older, we'll get to that. Recycling residential, $514 per month, effective January 1, 2022, effective when carts are furnished, $591 per month. Solid waste light commercial, effective January 1, 2022, $23.02 per month, and effective when carts are furnished, $26.47 per month. And in a residence where at least one resident is at least 65 years of age or older, effective January 1, 2022, $17.85 per month, and effective when carts are furnished, $20.53 per month. All rates will increase by 4% on January 1 for the next four years, ending December 31, 2026. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage and approval and publication as provided by law. To be determined. And now we have a second.
So we need to motion to approve that second reading?
Motion to approve. Second.
Let's do it again?
Busca?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. Item five, public hearing to amend, everything, public hearing to amend chapter 3.01, subsection two, 3.02, and 3.03, in the City of Cresco, Code of Ordinances pertaining to voting precincts and wards. Are there any comments in the public hearing or that we've received? And we'll close the public hearing. Let's see, section, so we have a second reading, I have to read this too, right?
Yep.
Summary of ordinance 493, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapters 3.01, subsection two, 3.02, and 3.03, establishing new voting precincts and wards within the City of Cresco, Iowa. Below is a summary of ordinance 493. A full copy of said ordinance and a map may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Chapter three, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, voting precincts and wards. Purpose, boundaries for the voting precincts and wards changed due to the 2020 census. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval and publication as provided by law and effective for elections held after January 15, 2022. Has to approve this thing. Oh. McConnell?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Item seven, resolution waiving the third reading and consideration of ordinance 493, establishing new voting precincts and wards within the City of Cresco, Iowa.
Really? Can we just read it one more time tonight?
That one's short.
Yeah, that one wasn't so long.
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Item eight, approval of ordinance 493, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by amending chapter 3.01, subsection two, 3.02, and 3.03, establishing new voting precincts and wards within the City of Cresco, Iowa. Oh. Second. Carman?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Item nine, request from Leon Langrick to change the city limits. Go over there?
So we, I had a request that, from Leon Langrick, that had purchased land in 2018, so his property is right on the outside of city property, and the land that he purchased was just inside of the city limits. So he built a commercial building inside the city limits, and that was in 2019, I believe. And so now he just got the property tax statement and does not want to pay the city property taxes, so he would like us to move our city limits so that his commercial buildings are not in the city limits. I said I didn't think there was any precedent of ever doing that, and I suggested that if he has a good justification for it, that he could request a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that he should write a letter justifying the change. And all I received was a letter to the council, so I haven't shared that with you. I don't believe that you have the authority to consider the request, but.
Do you think it's my solely with the adjustment or the planning zoning?
I'm sorry?
The, the.
Decision?
Decision would be solely with the board?
So I believe that the Planning and Zoning would have a public hearing on it, consider it, and then they would make the recommendation, and council would have the ultimate decision. So I guess if council is absolutely certain you're going to say no, probably save them the $100 public hearing for you.
Right.
We just want to tell them that.
How much money in taxes is it, if they're going to send it for, you know? It must be significant, there's lots of change.
Everybody pays city taxes, well, that one.
Right.
And then he added on to that building in 2021, and he is planning to build another one in 2022. So I told him that he needed building permits for these, because we never got building permits, so he's going to owe us some building permit fees, and we could actually charge him double the fees, because he hadn't get them before he built the buildings. And then, the next request on the agenda is to get tax abatement. Because they're commercial property, they would be three years at 100% property tax abatement, so, but then after the three years, then he would go back to paying the high city taxes, so.
And then it starts when you first build them, right? That starts as like year one.
He's doing it, he did it late, you're supposed to file by February of the year following construction, while he built it in 2019, so he's going to have to pay this first year's property taxes, it's too late. So then, what happens is, the law says you have to file within two years of the deadline, and we have to grant a deadline. I don't know why they have a deadline and then they make us extend it, but anyways, he's within the two-year extension of that, so if we were to approve those abatements, then it will follow, would take effect next year.
So the question kind of on the table is, do we have any intention of approving it, regardless of what planning and zoning should say, because that would say, if we're muted tonight, and it goes to planning and zoning, that will cost him $100 just to have them.
Right.
Pretty sure of it.
Would you say, Richard?
I'm not planning on zoning.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. I don't think, to be honest, I wouldn't be for it, because it's.
You just set a nasty precedent.
I have no intention of voting for it.
Yeah, I haven't.
I'll vote against.
Planning a zoning, because, thinking of the, on the other end of town.
Everybody that lives on the edge, and then pretty soon.
The other end of town would get a hold of it, and all of a sudden.
And it would probably be very costly to move that line, you know, we'd have to do ordinance changes, and.
Legit.
Annexation costs, all in reverse, and, so I don't even know what that costs.
If you have any plans of annexing, you're setting up, well, we won't.
Should be going the other direction.
We won't do this property, we'll do this one.
Well, with the purchase of the, of the property, you would think that you would be well aware of where the city limit line is.
Should have, wouldn't.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, oversight to me is not, not something that we should make the taxpayers pay for.
So do you need a motion or something?
So I think, I counted three no's and then a no.
Alex says.
No, I'm, I'm a no.
So I'll make a motion, and I'll just send him a letter and state that unanimous with the council, they're not seeing any justification for doing this.
Do we still have to apply the same?
He has to request that if he decides he wants to pay that, despite what council's arguing.
Yeah, what Michelle's trying to do is just save the $100 and go to the planning zone, just saying, listen, this can go to council after planning is on it anyway, and they already said, no.
And I told him, he should pay the $100 and go to P&amp;Z and not come to you, and then he came back with this letter for you, so.
Right.
I don't know what to do.
And I'm pretty sure it stated in my letter to write out the planning zone as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, we can.
I'll say.
Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Now that he's in the city limits, item 10 is an application for tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan for Lee and Langrick, DBA Valley Storage LLC. Need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Alex, and I'll second. Busca?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
And now he looks like. That'd be the right way.
Even that should have been done initially.
Two dollars a day.
And you still have to pay the building permit, correct. Item 11 is a motion to declare a public purpose for the $3,868 payment to Northeast Iowa Community Action in accordance with the 2080 agreement.
So move.
Probably Dave and Richard. McConnell?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Item 12 is resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a 2080 agreement with helping services. Oh. Allen and Alex?
Okay.
Brenna?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
Item 13, resolution authorizing the mayor and fire chief to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the 2021 Volunteer Fire Assistance, the F.A. Grants Program.
So the fire department received a, is just over $3,000 grant for handheld radios, and then they're going to apply for the 20 foundation grant to try to get some, and then use the trust money to pay for the rest of them. They've been holding off because they kept thinking the sheriff's department was going to upgrade the radio system, and they don't know when that's going to happen, and so they're having a lot of failures on the radio, so they're going to have to bite the bullet and do this, and hope that in a year or two, we don't have to get all the ones because of them changing, but you haven't heard anything, have you, too?
I was going to say, aren't they in the process?
No, the only thing I know they did is they combined both Law East and Law West, you know, one, so now they just have the one power.
Sure. They'll say, I knew they did something.
But, you know, we're still running this reception and transmission project.
So this is accepting the grant from Iowa VNR and us pledging at least 50%. We're probably going to end up paying eight to $10,000, so we'll be well over 50%.
Except for Richard.
Carman?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Portman?
Yes.
Item 14, discuss budget group sessions.
So, I apologize, Dave, but he might be late, he said, or, we kind of all had plans that days, but it was the only day that I could get more than two people to commit to, so, we're going to try it for Thursday, unfortunately, the fire department can't make it, and theater, she's going to talk to the theater commission, but Alex or myself might have to present that one, because she's out of class that day too, and library director is out sick, so she probably won't be here. So it might be a short afternoon because we might not have all the departments. But the interesting thing is hardly anybody's asking for any major projects. You know, usually we, that's our discussion is major projects. But with obviously IP, planning that we've done, we're kind of all like holding off on the really big projects. So there isn't a whole lot right now that's come in. But I think we should still have it. It's a good time to meet with the department heads, the ones that can at least make it. If we want to try to do another one in January, we can for the ones that can't meet it at this one. But at least this keeps all the one for me. We'll find it at 1:15 on Thursday. Unless, do we want to move it back a little bit? We could probably do it 1:30.
And Brian's going to be gone half of the day or more, but so I have to be at work, that's why I can't come. So I mean, I don't take those two, I don't take them either.
So I've already gave the schedule. You're okay? We'll just skip with the 1:15?
He just doesn't know when he's going to be back or something.
Right. Everybody just show up when you can and.
That's what you hear.
Yep, and we'll do it here.
Okay.
We just did it at, for social distancing last year.
Okay, Thursday, December 9th at 1:15 here.
Yep.
Item 15, discuss rescheduling the January council meetings to January 10th and January 14th, uh, 24th.
And I think Dave has a conflict, so he would rather do Wednesday of that first week and keep the January 17th. So you guys can discuss what works best for you.
You know, that, I mean, that's what we've done in the past on the cabinet, the Monday we do them on Wednesday following them. Will that be an option? The 13th on the, the first one? No, it's Wednesday, the 5th instead of the 1st.
Oh, okay.
And that would be the 5th and the 17th.
Yeah, keep the Saturday normal. And I think the biggest conflict was having them on the 3rd of being closed.
Yeah. Trying to get everything when we're.
So I mean, with the 5th, would that work?
It'll still really push us, but we can make it. I think we have payroll that weekend.
And I mean, if we go towards the end, you know, and say if we, at the next meeting, I mean, we can maybe solar fire at the next meeting.
Right.
And then we'll maybe a little bit of a idea to put out into it. 5th and the 17th?
17th.
17th.
So then we'd only be changing January 3rd to January 5th if we do that. So whatever works for everybody, I guess. It'll probably be one of those meetings where we won't have hardly anything at that January 5th.
I see the 17th is Martin Luther King Day. That's not something we.
We don't. It's not one of our holidays. Unless anybody else has a conflict, you know.
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good. Okay, so temporarily we're looking at January 5th and January 17th. To be confirmed next.
Let's, let's put it on next time to make the motion.
Okay. Item 16, discuss issues regarding the COVID-19 pandemic.
We've been ejected by Audrey this morning and the Omicron variant is present in most of our surrounding states. And we are expecting it here soon. Still learning about it. We are at a positivity rate of 11%. The long-term care facility outbreaks in Iowa is 20. No present outbreaks in Howard County at all. This past weekend, there were only 19 ICU beds available in the state of Minnesota, which is where we send many of our transfers. Of those COVID hospitalized, 73% unvaccinated. And in the ICU, 84% are not vaccinated. We continue to have vaccinations available at the clinic every day. And they're going to continue to have special pediatric clinics. And you know, just go to regional, rhshc.com and go to signup genius to sign up to get a shot.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can't read mine, so.
Yeah, you can have it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we certainly urge everyone to get vaccinated. It will really help. I'd take a motion to adjourn. So move?
Second.
McCallum?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
And I have not done anything with that yet.